Good evening to each of you and welcome to our regular board meeting Tuesday, February the 4th, 2020, 6 o'clock PM. Our pledge will be led by Mr. Bud McInnes and our invocation will be by my own brother, Brother Eddie Partridge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You don't look right without a football uniform on.
You'll bow with me as we pray. Most gracious God, we do thank you for this evening that you have given us and Father, in honor and ass with your presence.
Thank you.
As God, as we think about who you are, Father, we know your presence is everywhere. But Father, as we think about your love, the love that was demonstrated so many years ago that we may be able to come before your throne of grace tonight in the necessary prayers on the behalf of this board.
Thank you.
Father, we thank you for your son, Jesus, who you willingly gave up that we may have life eternal through his life, God. But Father, I just thank you for this board. I thank you for their hard work. I thank you for their time of sacrifice. But now, God, I do call on you to move freely in this room tonight.
Yes.
That wisdom and knowledge would be given, Father, and that things would done, be done in a way that would bring honor and glory to you. God, I just give thanks in advance for what you're going to do in this room tonight, the work that will be done to further the education in this community. And Father, we do praise you for the things that are being done in this community. And Father, we give you all the praise for that, God. And I just thank you for the men and women in this community and in this county that serve in the schools, God, in many different areas.
Thank you.
So grateful for them. And Lord, and I ask you to bless this time. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. And we thank Brother Eddie for our invocation. He is one of our former football standouts at Palacka Highway back in the day.
A star.
A star. I said a standout, but a star. And now he serves at First Baptist and works diligently when they have the prayer breakfast. He organizes all of that. And we do thank you for the young men that lives that you touch each Friday during football season. Thank you so much. And we know that it's worthwhile because you one time sat where they're sitting and now look what you've been called to do. Thank you. At this time, we will have our presentations. Well, it says presentations, but I only see one. We will recognize our Spelling Bee winner and the runner-up, Mrs. France.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board Chair, Board Members. I appreciate you letting us be here tonight. Just about two and a half, maybe a week and a half ago, and I had a couple of board members that came. We had our Spelling Bee and we had many people compete. And we have our champion and our runner-up here tonight. Our champion is one who was our champion last year. He gets to take his trophy from Middleton Burnie Elementary School over to Miller Middle School that has his name on it.
All right.
I didn't even check to see if there's anyone else who has their name two times in a row. I think there's one other student on there that has their name twice in a row. And Armand probably could get his name another time, but he's going to have to work really hard because Snow was a pretty good adversary there this time. There were, the round went, we went nine rounds and Armand won with the word balderdash.
I love that word.
And so it, so it was a great opportunity. It was a great opportunity for many different students, but we had a fabulous participation and some wonderful students that were spelling. Thank you, Ms. Jane, for being part of our judges.
I love it.
And at this time, I would like to call up Snow Whitman from Melrose Elementary School and Armand Kirkendall from Miller Middle.
Come on. I'm sorry, right in here in the center because we're going to have the superintendent.
Rick and Sandy need to go down there.
Thank you. And we'll have the board chair be turned and face are going to take a picture for us.
Congratulations.
Yeah, really.
Spelling Bee, congratulations.
Tanya, can you get one since we don't? Thank you. Oh, wait, mic's here. Mic's here. WJXT Channel 4 is the sponsor for the Spelling Bee Regional. And Armand will be the person representing us at that competition in Jacksonville, and it will be televised.
Yes, I watched him last year.
So congratulations.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Yay!
Congratulations.
Wonderful.
It's great being a good speller. Good speller. Yeah. Have fun. And even though they came up and received the certificates and they received the trophies at the Spelling Bee, I realized that they could not have done this without great parents supporting, encouraging, and maybe even calling words for them to spell.
Listening to musicals.
Yes, yes, to make sure they have the pronunciation. So we want to applaud you. Thank you. Any other presentations? Okay? If, if there are none, you, you're free to leave. You won't offend us if you, if you choose to leave.
Y'all want to go, but...
Yeah, you're free to leave and we'll pause to allow you to exit, only if you choose. Now, we're not running you home.
Yeah, you can stay if you want to.
Thank you. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you so much.
Again.
You too, dear.
And you all have traveling mercy.
Bye, sweetheart.
They have come from both ends of the county.
I know.
Right, from both extremes. Yes. Okay. And, and I'm just going to say, I don't believe we have any public comments. I did not receive any cards and I don't see anyone here that would want to address us other than if they need to come up. So at this time, we are now ready for our consent agenda. We'll start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
I had my questions answered this earlier today, so I'm fine. Nothing.
Okay.
I'm good.
Mr. Buckles?
I'm good.
He's good. I would like to, by recommendation of our superintendent, to remove item D4, by recommendation of our superintendent, to possibly be replaced later, but to remove item D4, recommendation by our superintendent. And everything else that I needed was taken care of. Mr. McInnes?
Nothing. Paul?
Did you mention G?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, G4, was that you, Mrs. Crawford?
No, it was already pulled for consideration. It was written on our new agenda.
Okay, well, let's make a note of that so that it will show up in the minutes. Prior to this meeting, item G4 had already been pulled for consideration by the superintendent. So that was item D4 and G4.
Madam Chairman.
And I keep expecting somebody to say, "Pino."
Are you through with...
We need to hear, Ms. McInnes? You said no.
I don't have anything.
Mrs. Crawford?
None.
None. All right.
Madam, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda minus G4 and D4 that you pulled or the superintendent helped. And we all pulled. Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. David Buckles that we accept, accept this agenda as printed with the exception of items D4 and G4, which were pulled earlier, one earlier by Mrs. Carmaney and the other one by recommendation of the superintendent. It was second by Mr. Bud McInnes. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none, the motion carries five zero. We do have some, so we will now go out of regular session into emergency session, and we have two items for consideration.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept emergency item one, 2019-2020, personnel allocation change number 13.4. Justification, explanation is that it is time-sensitive.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we accept item number one, 2019-2020, personnel allocation change number 13.4. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive. And second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve emergency item two, utilize Title I funds to pay teacher stipends for tutoring. Justification, explanations, time-sensitive.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Bud McInnes for item number two, to utilize Title I funds to pay teacher stipends for tutoring. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive. And it was second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. We are now back in regular session. Okay, we have no unfinished business and no new business. At this time, we will have our reports from the board members. We will start with you, Mrs. Crawford, and we'll move to your left.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that it was, it's always very nerve-wracking judging the Spelling Bee, but the outcome again this year was wonderful and a lot of kids put in a lot of hours and so did parents, helping them study. The next thing I want to do is thank the board for allowing me to attend the Avid Conference along with our superintendent, our CTE Director Renee Huff, and our Director of Avid in Putnam County, Amanda Barney. It was an excellent conference, a great experience for me. I really learned a lot and we will be having a workshop on March 10th to share some of the things that, that we learned at that conference.
As in during our board meeting?
During, yeah, before the board meeting.
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM. I wasn't, I wasn't sure of the time.
Yeah, we'll schedule that, March 10th at 2:00 PM.
Yeah, so I think we probably all have a couple of things we're going to share with y'all. So that was great and thank you.
Workshop.
The Panthers are still pushing on the road to the playoffs. They've got a game tonight at 7:15, so I'm looking forward to that. And the last thing I want to say, March 6th, Girls' Can at St. John's River State College. We will be sending our 10th and 11th grade girls. It's a wonderful experience. They will be exposed to many female leaders in different occupations that will share with these groups of girls. And they'll feed them lunch and I did know who the keynote speaker is, but now I don't remember. Do you, Laura?
Is it the judge from Jacksonville?
Yeah, I think it is. But it's always somebody that's really inspiring. So, you know, they have a boys' can and they've started doing a girls' can.
This is March...
March 6th at St. John's, and I don't remember what time it starts. But anyway, you know, it's just another opportunity for St. John's River State College to partner with Putnam School District and, you know, do what they can to, to help us, help our It's just a, it's a great partnership.
It's usually like a 10, right?
Yeah, somewhere around. By the time they get all the buses in and the kids unloaded and...
I want to make note of that.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford. Mr. McInnes?
Okay. Today, this afternoon, we met at Interlock and Library for the 315 pedestrian crossing project.
Oh, yeah.
And I think we've reached, got to certain, so you've got information about that, right?
I earned it out.
Huh?
I earned it out.
Yeah, they need our, yeah, our support. And this morning, I said earlier, I had an expulsion hearing into that. I did enjoy this past weekend. I understand the power of plastic as a mentor. Power of plastic is huge in the way of Legos. And I had a Lego soccer game that I used when I was mentoring because they are fascinated with Legos and it's an active soccer game. But Saturday was the trip when you see little plastic pieces that these young people have engineered and programmed to do their work.
Wow.
And I sat through the practice rounds. It's incredible just to see them all come together as a unit. And it kind of, I had, you know, today, it just hit me hard about, a lot of kids that don't actually fit the cookie cutter mold about, about school. And one particular student today just had a hard time about coming to school, but Legos meets that challenge. Every kid loves Legos, so if we can get these kids channeled in to the things that they like, I just think that's where we are.
Find their niche.
And, and I mean, you already see that kids are, they like what we're feeding them. I mean, it's, you see it at Mosley, the turnaround there. You go on a campus, I've been at Browning Pierce Interlocking Elementary and you just, you feel it. So whoever did, who all were involved with the Legos, it was great. I just wish I could have spent all day there. The, and I had the opportunity to read at the literacy week at Seelow and then Ms. Gilliard was there.
I didn't listen there.
We were probably there, awesome that day. And also, Ms. Crawford mentioned our partnership with St. John's River State College. I had the opportunity to attend a human trafficking awareness program. It was very eye-opening and it got down to that we are all first responders when it comes to human trafficking too. And it's big. And we just want to be up on that. And enjoyed the Spelling Bee and the Teacher of the Year awards. We were going to that.
Oh, yeah.
And congratulations to all the teachers and the support and the finalists. Thank you.
Most definitely. Thank you, Mr. McInnes. Mr. Buckles?
I had the privilege of being invited to meet with the young professionals of Palacka this last week at the Chamber of Commerce one evening, and they had a study that they've been doing with a Mr. Ferguson. Rick, you're probably familiar with his book, but the educator was right on with everything he said. I mean, it's all what we do here in our schools. And they had a variety of questions. I suggested on the questions like the kids that haven't found their niche or the things we do for kids who we find out are being trafficked by their parents or an uncle or, or those that are being abused, that they maybe would have Ms. Crawford come in with her counseling background. So your name, I don't know that they will call you, but I did say that as a counselor, you had extensive experience, as we all do, with horrible things that we deal with in the community. And they talked about everything. They had questions from everything, from what they can do to help and as a group. And I said, just the fact that they're meeting and asking questions and wanting to know what they can do means a lot. And with what they do with a blue crab, if they, you know, they're looking at maybe poster contests for kids or, or, you know, something to try to get started. Because, you know, they, the Ferguson gentleman that wrote the book that they were studying and the tapes alluded to the disparage, the disparages between, or disparity between high poverty and, and higher socioeconomic areas and everything that we know, but our testing in the state is geared around everything we know as to what really matters and impacts kids, but...
That's why Avid's...
We have, from, from Avid, I told them, I said, "It's like throwing the pebble in the pool. You've got to start from birth." And then they're going to, they're going to try to get with Angela Mills. And I brought her name up and said, "Y'all need to meet with her and try to find a way to provide packets to identify the mothers now that we don't have the prenatal and the obstetric ward here in Palacka like, like we used to and, and try to get the packets like we've talked about in the past." And it's, I said, "It's a systemic initiative. You've got to start there." The ideal thing would be to be able to identify parents who were, who were pregnant and, and, you know, those and try to get them to prenatal care and all, but absent that, try to get them to equal footing. And then you've got to retrieve the dropouts and the kids, you know, who, who need to find that niche or who need a relationship with an adult that makes them care and makes them want to be a part of things. And I said, "That's the reason that the district has been so successful, that Superintendent and his staff have put everything they can, you know, out there that, for now, until we can find a way to bring more industry and jobs to Putnam County." So I don't know who may get called, but all of your names came up in, in good, positive light. So with that, I'll pass it on.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
Okay. One thing, well, the, the stats on the homeless population came out in the Palacka Daily News today and, and they're, that's disturbing. And I think that we all know that our part is to keep those kids fed and, and provide a safe place for them. But it, it is startling and, and hopefully the county can get some more money and, and we can get kids homes. That, to me, just is a horrible situation to be in. I did enjoy the Spelling Bee. I probably would have been put out in a much earlier round than the eighth round. I never was a great speller, but those kids were really good. And, and one thing that I really noticed this year versus last year was that they asked for a word in the sentence, they asked for a definition, they asked for it to be pronounced again. And I thought that that was, it just showed that they really have been coached and their teachers are going over the whole process with them. So in turn, I think that's going to make it even better next year, you know, more and more rounds. But it was exciting and it would be very nerve-wracking, as Jo mentioned, for parents sitting in this, because I was nervous and, you know, I didn't even know them. But congratulations to all, everyone involved with that. And about five years ago, I took some members of my volleyball team and we went to Middleton Burnie to put on a little demonstration to start the volleyball rec league in South Putnam. And I hadn't been on the playground in probably 15 years or more since my children had been there. And it was extremely disturbing to me as a parent and as a PE teacher. But it didn't seem to bother any of the children. It was just a, it was just solid sand. That's all it was, like dirt, sand.
What playground?
The Middleton Burnie. But yesterday, I had the chance to go and visit and see the sod that Mr. Simons and St. John's Turf Care had installed Friday afternoon. And they're going to keep the kids off of it for about two weeks, but it's beautiful.
That's wonderful.
And, and it really, you know, I was just really happy that...
You mentioned that they needed to do something or they just...
Well, I complained to a few people, but...
All right. Okay. Just trying to see how the ball got...
But Mr. Simons took, took care of it. And so I really appreciate that. And I'm sure the custodial staff at Middleton Burnie is going to be very, very happy because it'll keep some of that dirt out of there always.
Holly, if you're standing on the street looking at the school, would it be at the far right or it's behind the school?
It's in the very back of the school at the la, they, they play between the last two buildings.
Okay.
And it was completely dirt.
Kind of, kind of to the left over there.
Right.
Well, that's, that, that usually has good behag grass, so it was the end down where we put the new wing was a bad sandy area, but...
Well, they play, the older kids play there, the younger kids play in that. They, that school uses space better than any school we have because they have a huge student population and they have very limited space, but they make use of every, every single corner. So, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I have a few things real quick. I did hear from Tina Pinkerton, Mrs. Carmaney, and I called her last week to inquire about master board. And after I thought about it, she had, she responded and said that due to the upcoming election, she thought it would be wise if we waited because the composition of the board may change. Who knows? And it makes sense. It's only seven months, she said, before elections.
Nobody's supposed... Well, it could still be...
Yeah. And, and then she said to, to go through the process as long as it, or not as long as it takes, but how it's spread it out by the time we would finish, the possibility could be there.
So we would know by June?
Yes.
You'll know by a date in June.
If, if, by date certain in June wherein no one has decided...
Filed.
Filed to run against the two. Yes. Okay, so I did get, so we, it's not like we were sitting and twiddling our thumbs. We did make an attempt. On yesterday, our sorority had the opportunity to take two of our girls that we mentor at Mellon Elementary to Golden Corral. And our instructions were eat as much as you want, sweets, anything, because when you are hyper, well, we did tell them this, "We're not carrying anyone back in the school. We're not rolling anyone back in the school." So make sure you don't eat, overeat and can't get back in the school. But they thoroughly enjoyed themselves. Both of them were so well-mannered. One was a terrific kid and I won't call their name. And, and the other one was the student of the month.
I was wondering how you chose them, yeah.
And they're, they're with that, this group that we meet with every second and fourth Thursday. But four, five of us were there, of our sisters, we were there with them. And they were so comfortable. They laughed. They went back and they ate and they came back and they entertained each other. So I, I just, I'm, I'm so thankful for that opportunity. As Bud mentioned, Ms. McInnes mentioned earlier, we did have the opportunity to read to sixth graders. I read with the group in Ms. Von Schell Offitz's classroom and I read from a book that we used at Price Middle School during the time I was principal there. And Faith Church had given me a copy. It's Harrison Me. Enough said if you know the book. All right, we want, I want to congratulate our superintendent for the RTM Spring Education Conference where you've been invited to share our programs and our graduation rate increase. And as I kept reading through, it looked like you've been invited everywhere to just talk about, you know, our success. So all of us are available. If you want us to fly out somewhere for you, we'll, we'll be willing to do that.
Especially in San Antonio. I'm still...
You're welcome, you're welcome to represent us. I'll, I'll stay on that.
And we're proud to be a part of this administration and this leadership.
Well, speaking on behalf of the board, I mean, it's, I'm very proud of what our entire district has accomplished.
Thank you.
The mouthpiece.
Okay, and the final thing, Mrs. Crawford, I've made a note here. Please text me on the, the morning of Girls' Can and I can get there. I just...
You want me to remember to text you?
Oh, Lord.
I don't know if that's going to happen. I'll write it in my calendar. That's, I'll remember.
But it's just, and I'll put it right on my, my big calendar board on my wall and walk past.
I won't make fun of you because I always call Bud.
You text.
Yeah.
All right, I'm done. Mr. Attorney, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Everything is going well in the legal department.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I want to congratulate our board attorney. I don't know if y'all realize, he is the chairman of the board of directors for our Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, I saw that. Congratulations.
He conducted his first meeting last week and did a fabulous job and he definitely has a vision for where he wants to take our community. And I look forward to working, continually working with the Chamber of Commerce. I think, you know, our close relationship has benefited, you know, the school district and the community. So thanks for your leadership. Look forward to that.
A5.
And I think Bud mentioned about the Lego tournament. I was there earlier and had, had to go to the health fair at the college, but...
Is that where you were doing the hula hoop contest?
Yeah, they, you never know what you run into, so...
We lose...
I bet it was you and not me.
Yeah, I don't quit my day job because I sure can't... But the Lego tournament was great. We had about 26 teams there and about four or five different schools from outside of the district were there. So great representation. And I want to mention that our Palacka High Robotics Team competed in, in Jacksonville this past Saturday at the same time. Out of about 26 teams, they finished number seven. And they are competing or... And they are competing or qualifying for the state tournament. So we will have them come back to the board and be recognized. You know, we always wanna do that with our state competitors. So I'm very proud of that. Again, our Teacher of the Year, Support School Related Employee of the Year, that happened after our last board meeting. So a very nice ceremony and thanks to HR Department, Ms. Whitehurst.
Always a great job. And Ben Bates.
Wanna thank Darla and Jackie over here for filling in with Sharon, filling in for Sharon. Sharon, she's doing some real important stuff tonight. Tonight, today's her 42nd wedding anniversary, so.
Yes.
You know, she's, congratulations to her. And I wanna thank them also, they've put in some extra time, all these ladies here. Just stuff like filling in for public records, doing public records requests. We've had several recently, won't go into detail. But I mean, they were out here working on the holiday, okay? Just to make sure they were done, so thank you for doing that. And finally, I wanna mention one thing that you'll probably hear about later. I received notification this past Friday that, talking about traveling, next month, I've been invited to attend a conference in Finland, the nation of Finland, for 10 days. And I'm one of 10 educators from the entire United States and the only one from Florida.
So you got it?
Yeah, I'm going, yeah.
Oh, good, 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 good.
Yeah, I'm gonna need to borrow some clothes because I hear it's pretty cold. That's an honor for our district.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of the accomplishments that we've had, you know, and I think that has helped me to be there. But again, the idea of the trip is to go over there and visit their schools, learn about their educational system. They're one of the top educational systems in the entire world.
That's correct.
And we talked about it today in our leadership meeting. I would like to go and if you have some questions that you'd like me to take and bring back, I think this is an opportunity for us to learn about what they do and maybe bring that back and share that with other people in our state and our region. So great opportunity and I'll give you more information.
That's awesome, and when is it?
It's March 11th through the 21st, so the day after the next board meeting, I'll be heading out.
Heading out, wow.
Yeah, so anyway, quite an honor and.
Congratulations.
It's your passport, right?
Got a passport, yeah. But it's all businesses financed by the Department of State in the United States. And they won't even let me take my wife, so it's all business, you know, very full agenda, so.
I'll bet you she's happy.
Yeah, she doesn't wanna go.
Not if it's cold.
And that's all I have, man.
That's a wonderful trip.
Did we skip Charlie?
I know, everything was fine in the legal department.
And the twins and the new one.
Sandy, could I?
And I did not know about the new one until I saw.
Sandy?
Where you been? I don't know.
Let me, let me, let me mention one last thing.
Is that a dollar?
I do.
Give it to him before you speak.
We all, as board members, encounter problems, phone calls, different situations, parents having problems with schools or students or threats, different things. I would like to thank Superintendent and his staff for always being right there to help. And I've had nothing but positive comments from the folks that you guys have been helping. Thank you, Tanya and Thomas and all of you. Rick, thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Thanks to all you guys out there who work so hard behind the scenes.
They do it, they do a good job.
And if there is nothing else to come before the board, we officially adjourn.